Okay, we're back in session.
Counsel.
You have something to add to this item?
Yes, Counsel, after consulting with staff, I've been advised that this account for the city requires two signatures to issue checks. That means all your vendor checks and all your payroll checks. If two signatures are not on the signature card due to the fact that the finance -- the two signatures that are on there are the former Finance Director and the Mayor. If you don't add another signature tonight, you will not be issuing checks until the next -- after the next council meeting, which could be problematic for the city. Further, it's my understanding that other -- from staff, that other cities have multiple names on their signature cards in the event something like this were to happen so that you don't have to pass a resolution when it happens. That's for the council to decide in the future. However, I would recommend that a one name, whoever that may be, be added to the signature card tonight.
Well, then, I think I will make a recommendation that we have both the names of the City Manager and the Assistant City Manager listed as this resolution states for tonight. But then I would like to also, after the -- after we vote, ask for concurrence by the council to please revisit this item at the next meeting in which it's possible to do so. I know we have an upcoming meeting where we're already kind of filling it. So, the next possible meeting in which we can have it added for a discussion, possibly a study session, I would ask for council's concurrence on that after.
Can I say something because we're in conversation, is it okay? I think we also have to do that anyway because at our next council meeting, we'll be picking a new mayor. So, yeah, I agree, and that's going to happen.
Yeah.
So, and then, and then, you know, do you want me to go forth and discuss?
Counsel, it's my understanding that the county clerk will certify the election tomorrow or Thursday. So, at the next council meeting, you will have a changing of seats. And then, at the first meeting in January, which is not, it's like the third week in January, I would recommend that this item be brought back at that point.
Awesome. So, I'll make a motion that we approve item three dash five with the resolution as it's ran, which will be adding those two signatures of the City Manager and the Assistant City Manager, and then that we have a further discussion in January.
A second. Okay. Is there any public comment on it, you guys? Any public comment? Seeing none. Okay, so we got the motion by Ms. Blair and a second by Mr. Neal. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Neal?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Thank you. So, where are we? All right, so we will now move to new business. Item five dash one, report and recommendation mural proposed by La Moore Oddfellows Lodge. Ms. Howell.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Last meeting, Jennifer Butts, the artist, had passed out the mural designed to you. So, you're familiar with this project. I wanted to get it up on the screen so that the public had a chance to look at this. This mural is proposed for the north side wall of the Oddfellows Lodge building, which is at the corner of Heinlein and D Street, and it would be on the blank wall facing D Street. The Oddfellows members have approved this mural. They would like for council to approve it as well. If you have any questions?
What will be the fiscal impact to the city?
There's no impact to the city. The Oddfellows Lodge is paying for this, and any maintenance that might need to be done in the future, if it gets graffiti on it, or if it starts being in disrepair, it would be on the Oddfellows to pay for that.
Is this within the jurisdiction of our Downtown Merchants Association? And have they also given the green light?
It has not gone to the Downtown Merchants.
This is in their jurisdiction, though, is that correct?
This is within the Downtown District, yes.
Mm-hmm. I would like to please have their input, if possible. That is their -- that is their direct purview. They don't have all of the city as their purview, but that directly is their purview, and it is essential. We have that association for a reason. We have not gotten feedback from that association yet.
Is it in? I just want to, I just want to make sure, because I highly respect the Downtown Merchant Association, but is it within their jurisdiction?
It's within.
To look at this, because this is, this building is, I mean, that's Oddfellows Lodge, it's their facility per se, it's not a business, it's a nonprofit organization. I'm just curious.
Right. I would, I would say it's within the Downtown District. In our municipal code, it doesn't say that in any specific district that it has to go to anyone else aside from council.
Okay.
It's for council to approve. This is community art. It's for the entire community to enjoy, not just the Downtown members, although I do understand, you know, there is a Downtown Merchants Advisory Committee.
But I also have another question. When the Sarah Mooney Museum was going to put their mural on the side there at La Moore and D Street, did that go to the Downtown Merchants Association?
No, it did not.
Okay, so, that did not, but this, we're suggesting it does.
So, what was the point of having a Downtown Merchants Association if they're not going to give advise, if they're an advisory group for what goes on downtown? If they're not going to be able to give advice about what goes on downtown, what's the point of having that association?
The Downtown Advisory Committee, Downtown Merchants Advisory Committee, was put into place to advise council on the expenditures of the PBIA Fund, the Parking and Business Improvement Area Fund. This does not fall in that category, so they're not approving or reviewing any of the expenditures of this project. So, it doesn't need to go to them.
Is that their sole purview, or are they supposed to also give us advice on what the Downtown Merchants sort of want to see in the vicinity and kind of relay that information back to council?
Downtown Merchants really, they put on events downtown, they do beautification items downtown, the banners that you see on the streetlights and the flagpoles and those sorts of things. The Downtown Merchants purchase those for downtown beautification. So, that's what they're in charge of.
So, would this count under downtown beautification?
It would, it, I would see it as beautifying downtown, but it's not under their purview per se to approve or disapprove something.
Well, I know it's their purview to advise, though. Have they, have we gotten any opinion or advice from them?
We've not gotten opinion from them.
Have we asked for their opinion?
We have not.
Have we asked for the opinion of any Downtown Merchants in that area? Who would be, I mean, because their businesses are going to be affected by it, right? I mean, have we asked what they think?
We have a member of the Oddfellows Lodge here, and she might be able to address this.
Okay.
Sandy, would you like to come up? Sandy Salier, she's an Oddfellows member.
Currently, two of the Oddfellows members are Chris Brazel and John Miller, and they are the owners of Ramblin' Rose, which is probably the number one business in Downtown La Moore, the best role model for a business in a small town. They served on the committee, and we've been working with various artists for the last two or three years to come up with a design that we felt best suited the building and the community and represented the history of the lodge, because the lodge is owned locally, and we want to maintain the historical value and the presence of the lodge. The mural that was on there was crumbling, and we paid for that entire wall to be resurfaced and restored with the idea that we would put a mural there that would represent the history and the purpose of that actual building. So, yes, there are two Downtown Merchants who are highly regarded in the community, who sat on the committee and approved the mural and worked with the local artists that we finally selected.
Can I ask a question, please? Is it appropriate to ask a question? There is already a mural there.
Correct.
So, there is already, there is already precedence.
Yes.
There is already that, okay.
Yes.
So, this is to replace the existing mural?
Yes, because it was beyond repair.
Is this what the mural previously looked like?
The mural was a representation of Leonie Pharmacy, and it had a drugstore theme to it.
Okay. Actually, I remember that mural, okay.
So, is, is this mural consistent with our sign ordinance? Would it fall under that, under that purview?
The mural is really artwork. As far as signage, it's not, it's not, it doesn't count towards signage.
Mm-hmm. So, it doesn't, that, that sign ordinance would not have any impact on what's being done here today, or on this mural?
No.
It was, it was known, excuse me, it was known to be for Leonie's Drugstore?
It used to be Leonie's Drugstore on the downstairs where Ramblin' Rose currently is located.
But this says, this says Oddfellows?
It is, the building is the Oddfellows Lodge.
Mm-hmm. That's advertisement. So, if, I'm just saying, if any nonprofit wanted to come in there and put something on, rent in a building, they can put something on there as well?
No, they own the building.
Okay, they own the building?
It's the building. It would be like on E Street, there's a sign, at least it used to be there, the Step Building, or, you know, people name their buildings. You can name your building, whatever. This one happens to be the Oddfellows Lodge, but they want to put a mural there for historical value.
Okay, but does, excuse, if I interject?
Sure.
Does Oddfellows own the building, or?
Yes.
Okay, Oddfellows own that building?
It owns the building.
So, they own the one downstairs as well over there?
Yes, they own it. There's actually three stories.
Very good.
They own the whole building.
Okay.
Yes.
And so, I know that we're still going through all the motions of setting up precedent and setting up order of things, and I actually have no problem with the mural, so that's not at all the question here. And, and I'm perfectly happy to vote on it right now. I'm just saying, for the future, kind of to give direction, I, my issue is to make sure that businesses in the vicinity, regardless of who owns the building, are asked for their input, if they appreciate it or not, or if, only because there are other businesses in the area and they are also affected. And if we have an advisory group that isn't able, for whatever reason, to give us input, that, that there's some effort made in the future, whenever there's these sort of murals that go up, regardless of who owns the building, that there's an effort made to whomever would be immediately affected in those areas, to ask for their input, ask if they appreciate it, just so that we know that we've done our due diligence in asking the Downtown business owners what they feel the effect, because they might come up with an idea that we don't realize would be part of, you know, there, we don't know what all of the issues may be.
If I may, if we could just have a study session or later date, or maybe ask in your council comments to get consensus so we can study this process and look at the ordinances and stuff, and then, because I don't really think that we should be relying it just on, then we're pushing it back to staff. We should just ask the city, see if we can get a consensus at that later time, ask the City Manager, just do a study on it. That way.
No, I think that you're, you're right. We should have, I think that's a great idea, just so that we can have a more set in stone procedure for when these things come up, so it's not just piece by piece each instance. I think that's a good idea.
Okay.
So, I'll make a motion to approve the mural, the five dash one, as recommended.
Second.
Okay, so, we need public comment. Oh, public comment, sorry. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, okay. Bring it back for council for vote.
All right. I, you want me to make the motion again, or?
Yes.
I make a motion to approve item five dash one, as recommended.
My second.
Okay, so there's a motion by Ms. Blair and a second by Mr. Neal to approve item five dash one. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Neal?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Thank you.
And before we move on, Mr. Mayor, can we please have consensus of the council to bring this to a study session so that we?
Bring it up during your city council reports, please. Okay, item five dash two, report and recommendation, Charge Point Electric Vehicle Charging Stations Location.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. This evening, I have a gentleman with me from Charge Point who's going to do a presentation for you. But just briefly, in October of 2017, council approved the city to move forward with electric vehicle charging stations in the Downtown area. It's done under a grant-funded program through the State of California, and Charge Point was the recipient of those grant monies through, I believe, a statewide RFP process. We ran into some hurdles regarding our original location that has required that we amend the location of those electric vehicle charging stations, so I'm going to ask Hip to come up and give the presentation for you, and then we'll answer any questions.
Thank you so much, Michelle. Good evening, everyone. So, my name is Hip, and I'm with a company called Charge Point, and we manufacture electric vehicle charging stations. As Michelle mentioned, in 2016, we were funded with state funding to put in electric vehicle charging stations throughout 70 sites in California, and La Moore was selected as one of the locations. Charge Point is very fortunate to work with the city of La Moore to put in EV charging stations. Fortunately, the first site didn't work out, but we didn't stop there. We worked with the help of Michelle as well as Frank to find an alternate option. And if I go through here, slide, just to give you a little bit of reference for the initial site, La Moore Chamber of Commerce by the Youth Plaza. It was a great location, but with PG&E's feedback, there's 450 feet of run for the utility primary line, which would make a huge impact to the city, local businesses, as well as the parking lot. So, we decided with some of the justifications, we needed to move to another site. One last thing I also wanted to mention was the California Energy Commission budget and timeline. With this construction site, it would certainly be out of the budget. But we did proceed further with an alternate option, which is at the La Moore Recreation Center, Recreation Center. And if you look at it here, it's an approximate 50-foot run of the utility prime line, primary line, to the charging location, the parking spaces. So, we do have this one here that we worked with Frank as well as Michelle and Amanda on, and if you want to take a look here, this would be the scope of work. We designed it where there would be three charging stations, and there'll be an access, a five-foot access aisle that is ADA compliant, that is accessible to the sidewalk there. And the scope of work, area of work, would be a lot smaller than the initial site. So, with your approval, we'll certainly move forward with the building permit process and then start constructing the site.
Any questions?
I just have one question. And first of all, I just, I'm so excited, because I can't believe it's happening faster than I thought it would. But I just poignantly want to ask you, what has your, been your experience working with the city and making this happen? Can you please let us know?
The process has been great. It's just the PG&E, they, you don't have any control in the priority that they put in charging in, or any other projects, right? I'm pretty sure PG&E, all the fires going on and stuff like that, there's probably a lot more priorities, but we're pushing really hard. We've actually, PG&E has stepped forward and took to put this more of a priority, so it definitely helps us out.
I just, I ask that because I've had a lot of comments, and I just wanted to make note that it wasn't anything that the city's holding up. This is something that PG&E, we don't have a control of their timeline, so.
Yeah.
All right, thank you very much.
And this would also blow your budget, too. If you left it at the other place, it would, it would exceed, it would exceed cost, your budget, so theoretically, you couldn't install it, unless you got other type of funding.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, so, right.
Like, we look for any other type of funding.
Right, exactly. But, but if you move it here, it's within the scope, it's within the cost, so you can effectively complete the project.
Yeah, as soon as we have the building permit approved.
Got it.
We can get started.
Okay, thank you.
What else do you have on these locations that, besides La Moore, what you're working on? Do you have one in Hanford, or the military base, anywhere?
So, as I was driving from Campbell, California today, I dropped by Gasteen to charge. I went to Colinga, we're going to have a site in Colinga.
Okay.
Soon here. And then, La Moore, nothing yet.
Nothing, okay.
But it's okay, I can call my mom if my, there's no more, there's no more electric vehicle cars. And then, I'm heading up to Fresno after our meeting here.
They don't have one in Hanford?
Hanford, maybe for a level two charging, but nothing DC fast chargers. So, La Moore would certainly be the first one.
Very good.
So.
Tired of playing second fiddle, fiddle, isn't it, in Hanford?
Yeah.
How long does it take to charge a vehicle at one of these stations?
At one of these stations, it all depends on the vehicle, if it comes up, if it drives up to the charging station with however much energy it has left in it. For the DC charging, the DC fast chargers, level three chargers, it typically takes about 30 minutes to an hour and a half, which will have one of those located at the stall south. I don't know if there's a pointer here, but it would be on the south end. And then, the two above it, it's going to be for the level two charging port, which takes a little bit longer, it takes about two to four hours.
Okay.
So, this opportunity would certainly determine which behaviors there is here in La Moore. There's a lot of folks that are looking more for longer charge, which is employees or parents that are bringing their kids here for a long day event, or would it be a shorter event, an hour wreck time for the DC fast charger?
And will everything be metered?
Everything will be separately metered.
Okay.
So, this is going to be a new utility service.
Okay.
That's going to be placed there.
How do people find out about where these charging stations are? People that are traveling?
Mm-hmm.
I'm, because I know we talked about this when you were here in 2016.
Yeah.
The opportunity for people to come to La Moore that may not normally come in and do some shopping, or, you know, visit our city somehow, so how does that happen?
Yeah, absolutely. So, not only does Charge Point manufacture the hardware, but we provide the technology behind it, the software, and we have 60,000 charging ports available on our app. So, what's, what's great about our app is that back in the days when you, before gas stations, you had to plan out your trip, but you didn't have technology then. Now, you have technology, so you're able to plan out your trips with electric vehicles. So, you would be pinpointing. And as the vehicles get more intelligent, you're going to type in your destination, and it's going to tell you where to go to charge.
Absolutely. That's awesome.
Yeah.
The other question I had just had to do with our city obligation. There are times in our city, because we have extreme heat in the summer, where our power grid just gets overwhelmed, and, you know, we have sometimes had rolling brownouts and blackouts, and the city, we have an obligation to, to make sure that certain priorities are kept. For example, we have our Recreation Center that acts as a cooling station. Do we have an obligation of, at any point where, if we had to, for example, like cut, like power, or ask, or request that some areas of the city not have power, because we need to ensure that, say, for example, we have air conditioning in the cooling station and not have the energy off the grid somewhere else? Do we have an obligation? Do we have the ability to do so, or is that completely a separate entity? I just want to make sure that our, we don't have an obligation that we have to keep power going when we might have other priorities that we might need to do.
Yeah. So, it's going to be separately metered, so it doesn't affect our charging stations at all.
Okay.
And our charging stations are fully networked, so if there's something wrong in the area, like if there's so much utilization, energy being used, we can detect that on our technology. So, we can actually call you, the city, and just see what's going on, and we'll certainly work with the city.
And we would not be under any obligation to maintain a certain, okay, that's all I need to know.
That'd be more with PG&E and load shedding of the utility to effectively handle the brownouts.
Right. Just wanted to double check.
No, it's good, Claire.
That wasn't slipped in there somewhere.
Good question. Thank you. Any other questions? Is there any public comment?
Are you accredited? Are you accredited?
Accredited, you need to plan on that.
Are you accredited, Association, are you accredited, certified?
Certified, yeah.
Yeah, accredited is the word she's looking for.
Yeah.
Are you recognized?
Yes. Are you accredited? Like, at elementary school, you have to go through a process to get accredited. Are you?
No.
Is your company?
No, so our company is a private company, so I don't, I mean.
Did you have to meet, you had to meet certain criteria, though, to meet the qualifications for the grant, or the, the state funding to, to do this, to do these projects? I mean, you had to meet certain qualifications of, yes, from the state of California.
From the state of California.
Right. So.
Does that answer your question, Ms. Jackson?
Hold a moment.
Okay.
I have a question. I don't have an electric car, other than my golf cart, I use the race rack out here. But I'd like to expand on Councilwoman Blair's comment she made real brief there, cost.
Mm-hmm.
And I want to be, for lack of better words, in the state of Kentucky, we use this word all the time, ignorant, okay? I don't know about these stations, but I know in the building code for the state of California, and the Public Works Director can address me, I think here over the last year, new codes have required new development to put these things in and pay for them. Is that true or false?
It'd be this.
Talking about right out here at our La Moore facility. And who maintains those, the business and everything? Who, who eats the cost of these things when they start going bad? We're not giving free gas stations, so we're not giving free electrical service. I'm not being negative here, I just want to know the answer.
The people pay.
So, from the podium.
Chargeable.
So, I can answer specifically about these charging stations, and then I'll let Frank expound on what our requirements are for future developments. But our contract with Charge Point, based on the way that the, the state wrote the proposal, it's all maintenance for the length of the contract, and I, you all have to forgive me, I don't remember the exact length, maybe Hip has that, but the city will incur no cost for these charging stations, for installation, for the building permits, for the construction, for the maintenance long-term, for the power, none of that cost is being borne by the city. It's actually being borne by the state of California through their efforts to get more of these installed, do you like?
Is this a new process based on the code of last year?
This particular, this is all grant-funded through a special process, and the state instituted it in an attempt to get more electric vehicle charging stations throughout the state of California, along the I-541 corridor centrally, so that people could go from Northern California and Southern California and have places to stop. So, my, my limited understanding, and Hip can correct me if I'm wrong, is that this was done as an incentive to try to get municipalities to encourage this type of development in their community without there being a fiscal impact, so that way they could see more growth in the electric vehicle world.
It's planning to see, basically, to encourage folks to drive more electric vehicles, and then they'll have the confidence that there are charging stations available on La Moore to charge at.
And that would also bring in people to eat at restaurants for lunch, or maybe walk around, or whatever, while their car is charging, so having it downtown is advantageous for a number of reasons. And if you have a car, I'd love a car, anytime you want to charge, we have a charging station at our house, so you're welcome to stop by. But my, my husband has an electric car, a number of our friends do, and it's true, we do map out usually where those stations are at. And while you're waiting, you're usually mapping it out, like at lunchtime, or maybe you might be staying overnight and needing a hotel stay. So, this is an opportunity to not only have something in place that's grant-funded, that's not going to cost the city anything, but in turn, may in fact add more revenue, because those that are coming in from outside just visiting may then go downtown, go to a restaurant, go to a hotel, and hopefully then that fees are, offers a little bit as well.
Okay. Mr. Rivera, did you have something to say?
Yes, so in regards to the building code, yes, it is in the energy code. It's basically more, more required for large, larger occupancies, so like assembly places, PG&E actually has a couple of charging stations there. And I believe they work it through a similar company to where the owner of the, of the business is being repaid his investment in providing the equipment for, for charging stations. But it is more, I think, driven by larger occupancy uses.
So, if I'm a developer and want to build industrial art, and I want to build 10,000 square feet of building, then you building code requires you mandate me to put in a new charging station and pay for it?
Yes, I'm not sure what the trigger point is, but yes, it, it all, it depends on the size of the building, yes, on whether you got to have any.
So, let, let him and his dad go freewards and not charge the guy that's trying to build business. That's what I'm asking. Let him get some freewards, and then, you know, and you gotta build in your town and expand and grow, and you're throwing these new laws on him, but he's coming in town building for you stuff.
Yes.
Someone's gonna have to fix it when it breaks, because I'm old enough to know I have stuff that breaks.
Right, right. Yeah, the only ones I know is Enterprise, PG&E has, has a Charging Point Station, and the one across the street, depending on when he occupies his buildings, he will probably be obligated to add, you know, one or two.
And he has to maintain that thing. But I guarantee that 25,000 people who stand right know about it.
I think, again, I'm not sure, but I think they're contracted with someone who will probably come over and...
Someone's going to pay them.
Yeah, right, yeah.
May I ask a question, simply because it came up? I don't know the answer. Would a business owner in town be eligible to also apply for these grants as we have done so? Would that be?
At this, I would not think so. Because one of the obligations the city does have is we have to, there's a certain number of parking stalls we have to reserve for future growth. If this takes off, I believe it was either eight or ten, but I'm going off memory from our first go-round. So unless you had a business that had that kind of parking that they could dedicate, I don't think they're eligible for this.
So for this, and that's correct. And for this particular grant, they also had proximity to the freeway requirements. And so they were eligible to reach out to private entities to see if they were interested. But again, along with meeting the parking requirements, they also had to meet the distance within the freeway. And so they reached out to us after reaching out to several of our private businesses who decided that they weren't interested at that time. So they came to us knowing that we had more property with probably larger parking lots that could facilitate the use.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Is there any other public comment? No? All right. Bring it back to council.
Thanks, Hip.
Thank you again. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'm all for it. I think it's coming. It's part of the future. It's not going to cost the city anything, which is our primary concern. And it may in fact generate revenue because, as I stated, a number of folks do map out where they're, get their charge from. And oftentimes that is during lunchtime or overnight. So because they have to map out how long their stay is in different areas. And I think that that certainly will lend itself to having people stop in for a bite to eat or staying at a hotel. And I think that will actually help generate revenue. So I'm all for it.
So is that a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve, but I didn't know if other council members had any other comments.
I have no comment.
Okay, so there's a motion by Ms. Blair. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Brown. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Neal?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Motion has passed. Thank you. So now we will skip over five-three and five-four and we go to five-five. Report and recommendation side letter number two between City of Lemoore and the General Association of Service Employees Employment Union. Ms. Blair?
So I think I will be with you for the duration of these items. So the next four are actually grouped, so I'm going to give you an overall synopsis, but I believe you have to vote on them independently. So as council is aware, we received word in October, late October, that our insurance rates for the insurance programs that were provided to our employees, our medical insurance, our premiums were going up thirteen point eight-six percent. And so as part of the negotiations process, we came to council and we asked, you know, how would you like us to move forward with negotiations? So an offer was put on the table for the city to share nine percent of the thirteen point eight percent share and pass on four point eight-six percent to the employees. That offer was taken to all three bargaining units, our general services unit, our Lemoore Police Officers Association, and then our sergeants association. And all three units voted in favor of accepting the city's offer. The fourth group is the unrepresented management group that does not have a bargaining unit, but we bargain...
Unrepresented employees, not just management.
Oh, I'm sorry. She's correct. Unrepresented employees. And so basically, there's four items before you. The first one, five-five, is accepting, asking the city to accept and agree to the side letter, which makes a single-year amendment to their existing MOU where the city will cover nine percent of this year's share, with the understanding, as we discussed, that the city is going to be looking into long-term solutions for health insurance plans moving forward as much as we can.
So is this where we can make comments or?
Question.
Yeah, there's this council comment. You will have to take these items one at a time.
So you already know where my comments are going to go, so nobody's off. I was fully prepared to vote no on these issues, not because I disagreed, but because I wanted a more fully thought-out permanent solution so we're not piecemealing this each year because we know the health insurance costs are going to go up. And I want a long-term solution for our employees so they're not waiting on edge every single contract year. That being said, the employees, I'm going to be led by the unions. They have all asked that they want this to pass. And I'm doing so with reservation. And during my council comments, I'll be bringing this forward again to ask for consensus that we come up with a long-term solution. So I just wanted to put those comments into the record that I am voting yes, but with reservation because the, I want a long-term solution to this issue.
So just to reiterate, the groups that are being, that will be impacted have all agreed to the side letters. Is that correct?
Yes and no. These side letters will affect everybody, but there's an unrepresented group that is not allowed to vote because they're not represented. So the city does it on behalf of those employees. So, but the agreement will affect and will be for the benefit of every city employee.
But they, those...
Yes, and they agreed.
They have?
Yes, they have actually agreed.
There any other questions? Public comment? Okay, seeing none. We'll bring it back to council for further discussion and vote. Have a motion?
Make a motion to approve five-five as written.
Second.
Okay, so there's a motion by Mr. Brown and a second by Mr. Neal to approve this item as written. Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Neal?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Item five dash six is report and recommendation side letter number two between City of Lemoore and Lemoore Police Officers Association.
Correct. Exact same situation. This group voted, their membership voted, and accepted this as well.
And I make the same comments on all of them. It's just I'll be asking it for council comments, for consensus. But I'll make a motion to approve item five dash six.
Well, let's have a public comment. Do we have any public comment on this? Seeing none, okay. Bring it back to council.
I'll make the motion to approve item five dash six as written.
Second.
Okay, motion by Ms. Blair, a second by Mr. Brown. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Neal?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Five dash seven is report and recommendation side letter number two between the City of Lemoore and Lemoore Police Sergeants Union.
Ditto. The police sergeants unit voted and approved this as well.
Okay, are there any questions? Is there any public comment? Seeing none. Bring it back to council for a motion.
Motion to approve five-seven as written.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Brown and a second by Ms. Blair. Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Neal?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Five dash eight, report and recommendation approving changes and benefits for the unrepresented employees of the city.
And this is the exact same situation, except this is the group of individuals that do not have a bargaining unit, so they don't vote. And so the document looks slightly different because it has to be adopted via resolution and not by side letter, but it's the exact same concept.
Any questions? Public comment? Seeing none. Bring it back to council for a motion.
Make a motion to approve item five dash eight as written.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Blair and a second by Mr. Brown to approve the item as written. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Neal?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Motion has passed. Thank you.
Thank you, council.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go to city council reports and requests. Item six dash one. Ms. Blair?
Well, why don't we just kick it off with that? I'd like a consensus of council to please, I don't know if it'll be best in the study session or how it would be best worked out, but to formulate or direct staff to try to come up with solutions for a long-term solution for our city employees with the rising cost of healthcare costs, to figure out how we can best address those issues.
Study session? Agree.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Consensus of council, yes. Did you get that?
I would also like to please request consensus of council. And I'm not sure how, again, this is just direction to staff or how this would go about. But when our chancellor came and spoke about the broadband service, I have also talked to a number of people in the community. I would like to please request, hopefully it's okay to, I'll just, I don't want to say I'm public. I'll say their names privately later, some names that I've come across that, to please explore the option of talking with our, not only the college, but also the Office of Education, the county office of education. We have a real opportunity to provide broadband service to residents in Lemoore and throughout the community. The county owns some of that fiber optic cable. And I don't know all the technical terms. I just know that we own, or the county owns, a portion of that and we have an opportunity to provide service at low or no cost to a number of people in the community. And I would like to have consensus of council to please direct staff to look into those options. I'm happy to provide names. I don't know if those names would like to be presented in public, so I'll be happy to provide those with you privately. But with the notion in mind of understanding what it is that we have an opportunity to do with those fiber optic cables and how we might be able to best serve our community, rather than just... Because some communities are just letting it go and leaving it and not exploring those options. And they're coming in and being taken over by companies that are then charging community members where we as a city can have local control of those things. And I'd rather we have local control and say, and try to provide free and low-cost options to our community if at all possible.
You're looking for a consensus?
Yes, please.
One thing I just want to say then, I can make a comment on that, if I may.
Let's, she wants consensus.
You can't really discuss the item.
Okay. I just, I, all I wanted to say is, is I'd like to have a study session that we can discuss it.
But that, would that still leave it open to staff going out and looking at those options to present during the study session?
Yes, I believe so because also the California League of Cities has got a lot of data on this. And so I want to look at everything. I want to look at all the factors. I want to look at the economic, you know, what it's going to, what it's going to cost our city. So we also walk into it that we have all the data. That's where I'll end it. So I'd like to have a study session.
So council, there's already been some discussions with the city and the Kings County Office of Education. They want to run a bunch of new fiber lines to get to all the schools. So they have given the city the option to help oversize or tee off of those lines. It's been a while since I've been involved in those conversations, so I don't know where it's at, but I do know there has been conversations and there is open dialogue. So I'll just have to, we'll have to get back on the table and see what's happening. But we'll definitely bring something to you. And I might even invite that gentleman here to do the study session.
Okay. I would like to prioritize that, please. So can I have consensus to do that study session as a priority? I'd like to get that in sooner rather than later. Yes?
Yes.
Okay. And then the other thing I would just say, again, I think I already mentioned it when Amy was here, but the parade this year, I was out there, it was phenomenal. It was even an hour in, which you guys know, it's a small community, you see parades. You wouldn't imagine an hour in, it would still be full of energy, full of people on the street, even with the rain. And even an hour in, I see the band coming through and people shouting and screaming, and it was phenomenal. And I just wanted to put that on the record that I was very appreciative of the chamber's direction on that and that I hope that next year it's bigger and better. There was one small area of concern and I won't get into too many details. I just hope that next year, I would like to see a greater effort be made to let the council also be involved in possibly a council float or council family float or some, something that would allow the council to be able to give some kind of input because I was there. I was there with my children. But I think it would, I had a number of people in the community ask, where's council? Why don't they have their own float? That sort of thing. And I thought maybe just going forward, again, it was a phenomenal parade. Not to take away from the parade, just going forward, a suggestion being that we maybe have a study session or a meeting, you know, close to the holidays next year to talk about some ideas that all of the council, so everybody can participate in that discussion ahead of time next year. That's all.
Thank you. Mr. Brown?
Attended a Kings Air Real Transit meeting about a week ago. In the K-CAG meeting, I've already presented to K-CAG the award or the letter of recognition, appreciation. Really don't have anything that's big to report out of K-CAG. And CART, they're still looking on that flex route. They're trying to, I know there's been some little issues with the flex route that Angie Dow and them are on it. If you, if anybody has any issues with the flex route, please call CART. They're in Hanford. And for Facebook, it's eight-five-two-two-six-nine-one. And they will walk you through it, help you out. But, and just want to thank Breakfast of Santa, went great. Parks and Recs, Kings Lions, Lemoore Lions. There's Lemoore Lions, but there's a couple of Kings Lions people there too. I want to shout out to them. But Lemoore Lions, that was fantastic. That money comes back and goes back and helps kids who can't afford the programs. So it goes back in the community. Christmas parade was great. Thank volunteer fire department, PD, everybody. There's nonprofits, 4H, you know, you name it. It was the city. It was Lemoore. So it was good stuff, good stuff. And just, if I don't, I'll be here at the next council meeting, but if you don't come by, Merry Christmas to you. That's all I got.
Thank you. Mr. Neal?
I'm bringing this up. I wasn't going to bring it up. I thought it was going to be answered earlier. But about the warrant register for the consent counter, we need to know that information from now on, if you can. I'm not trying to police you. I'm just trying to see if we can get that to the people, let them know.
I concur.
Yeah, I agree.
Good catch.
Okay. Another thing I want to know is, how much money did we give Quaden off in the last month? Do you have that?
I don't have that number off the top of my head.
Okay.
But we have, we have gone out to, we went out to RFQ for new city engineering services and we're vetting the top candidates. So if everything goes as planned, we'll be switching.
Thanks for that information.
I can bring it back to council.
Okay, you bring it back to council.
You will have to bring it back to council for the approval of the contract.
Okay. Another thing is, why I ask that? Because all the money that we put into Quadenoff, if we could have put another planning department back together like we once had, maybe the community want another planning department. And it's work. And I think we have a lot of people that are still looking for work and let's get Lemoore back on the map, as far as that goes. And almost done. Let's talk about Operation Gobble. I went to Hanford. It wasn't in Lemoore. I went to Hanford and handed out turkeys to those who couldn't afford and handed them out to people and met different people. And I tell you, it was, it was a touching moment because they were so, you see the joy in their faces. The kids so happy, you know, you shake their hands, you communicate with them, transparenting with them. And that was a good thing. Last thing is, what's going on with the water? If I may ask you, what's going on with the water treatment, the sewer, that plan that you got going on out there?
Still finalizing tests. John Souza's been in contact with the group. Still trying to finalize equipment. So we're not being charged anything at this point because they're bench testing. So as long as nothing's on site, we don't, we don't get a fee for the...
They're not charged?
No.
Very good.
We've paid a total of one month's fee for the original equipment. But yeah, everything's still testing on the bench scale. They don't want to bring equipment out until they, the probability of it working like they want is proven in the lab. So we're expecting, I was already expecting it here, but they're probably about a month out, I believe.
How long have you had the machines out? How long have you had that machine out there so far?
They've been out there, it's been about four months since we actually signed that contract, I think. So we had equipment for about a month and a half onsite. Everything else, they're taking that data now and they're running it in labs.
Okay. Thank you.
I have two items to report on. This Saturday, this Saturday, October or December eighth, from three to seven PM, there's going to be a Toys for Tots event at Lemoore Eye Care Center, Dr. Garcia's office here in Lemoore. We'll have a couple Marines there to accept toys that will go to a good cause. So the public is welcome. That's the, again, this Saturday from three to seven at Lemoore Eye Care Center. And also I wanted to just comment on an issue that came up, a concern that came up about leaf pickup by a resident here in Lemoore. They contacted all of us, I think, through, via email and forwarded it to the city manager for a resolution. And then he forwarded it to our Public Works Supervisor Lead, John Souza. And he sent a very nice email back to that resident that I think is really going to be helpful. I just wanted to commend him for his response and how he handled that situation. I know that there's a need for a lot of services and we just can't provide all of them sometimes. But I think the way he responded is going to come up to a successful resolution. And I think the resident is going to be pleased with that too. So I just wanted to let you know about that. I don't know if you were aware of it or not, but he did a really good job. And that's all I have. Meeting is adjourned.
Yeah, I just got something in the corner of my eye.